Sure, we'll be happy to.
What is the president, the president pro term? I don't know what president and the president pro term, and it's one minute. Here comes.
I don't know where James is.
I have no idea either. Is he here?
Oh. Maybe virtuals.
So Valerie, you have to second everything that the president does as a past president.
No.
Okay, I will do it because I was the past, past, and now Ryan. First I go. I didn't give you an order. But you see, you have. Because it's the protocol. I have a quote.
Where is Ryan? I guess we'll start. All right, good evening, everybody. We're here for the March 18th Committee at the Hall. We are talking about parks bond projects and deferred maintenance. Mary Jane, MJ, go ahead.
Good evening, council, council president, council members. Thank you so much for letting us come before you today. We think it's been some time since this department of Parks and Recreation has been in front of you to review our parks bond projects, as well as to give you insight to other projects that are currently open and that we're working with. I'm going to be handing this over between Jason and Betsy. They'll be introducing themselves and I'll be popping up occasionally. We also have facilities here with us, Jeff Manishi and Martin in here. So hopefully, we'll be able to answer all your questions as well. Thank you.
Good afternoon, council members. I'm Jason Letterer. I'm the Parks Planning Manager here at the city.
Good evening. My name is Betsy Severson, and I'm the Capital Project Coordinator. And I'll start us off. I'm going to start us with a brief discussion of our, very brief discussion of our parks portfolio and usage of the parks. So as of 2020, the city manages more than 40 distinct parks and natural areas comprising over 1,200 acres. The classifications shown here start with our smaller neighborhood parks and getting larger with community parks to our largest parks, which is our one regional park at Coulon. Special use parks relate to the golf course and the lands around the senior center are examples of that. And we have 13 miles of maintained trails, a number of park corridors that are associated with some of those trail segments. And another thing we wanted to talk about is a little bit more in this presentation is trying to be more holistically integrated with facilities in terms of our buildings. So we're including here the buildings of the Aquatic Center, Senior Center, and our three community centers. So by piggybacking off of a CED contracted tool that compiles anonymized cellphone data, we have some good usage data of the parks. We can see here on the graph on the right that this is total annual park visits, that visits to the parks are trending upwards again. We're recovering after the pandemic. We know from this data which parks are the most used. They kind of jump around from year to year. We have some five-year data, but consistently Coulon, our regional park, and the parks and facilities around RCC, including Cedar River Trail Park, Liberty Park, are our most consistently big draws. And the map on the left is actually showing where visitors are originating from. The darker purple shows that most of our visitors actually come from Renton or nearby areas, but we do have a regional draw as well. Those lighter sort of lavender colors are folks that are coming from quite far away to visit our parks. I'm going to transition it over to MJ, actually, to speak to our division overview.
That's no problem, but in terms of this slide right here, we're looking at programmatic guiding documents. The department uses several to ensure we're in compliance. It keeps us in compliance for grants obtaining, but as well as their guiding documents. Most of these have feedback from community on what they're interested in terms of design, priorities, elements. And then the other one, in terms of those documents, the most important one that I wanted to highlight was the McKenstry. This is the facility's six-year capital investment program. I did want to note to council that this document was not included in the last park bond project list of projects, and unfortunately, it wasn't complete in time to be incorporated. This is something we're strategically doing differently moving forward is ensuring that our buildings are incorporated in all of our projects when we're planning them and, again, going to a model that's certainly holistic. In terms of this one, what we just wanted to show here, and it certainly is just to show, it's a very tiny team right now executing the work, and we're super proud and incredibly grateful. At the moment, this is really it. It's Jason and Betsy, and they have profound technical knowledge and experience, both coming from consulting world. So this is just to give context again to the size. One thing to note here, too, is our beloved neighborhood program, and we have a lot of Parks and Rec staff in the room here supporting this conversation this evening. They were moved to this division. The intent in incorporating them into the planning division is so much of what we do when we do these projects requires trusted relationships and information from our residents. We did not want to rely on just our consultants. They're a fantastic partner, but we wanted to use our trusted relationships because they're going to weigh in on the things that are most impactful to them, and that's their local parks and regional parks and centers. And so this was an intentional match and marrying of the two areas. It will not take away from some of these larger events that they're still a part of, but we needed the relationship to really ensure that as these plans and projects come onboard, that we're doing it with ongoing relationships with our residents. We didn't want to cold call them and just have them come every now and then. We really wanted to have it be a part of where we have existing dynamic relationships. That being said, the division is also responsible for urban forestry. We have a really good program, but it's very small again. What we're finding is the department is small in some areas. We don't have as much depth as we really would like in terms of the population size of the community, but we have opportunities for sure where we can grow there. So this particular slide, Slide 7, that just shows how the department didn't really grow with population, and that's, again, an opportunity in terms of figuring out how we want to strategically provide the maintenance and programmatic support. It doesn't automatically mean we have to double the department, but we certainly are looking at all avenues and ways that we can take care of what we have with the existing staff and then be strategic where employees need to be incorporated. This would have also impacted the size of the facilities division because it had been in our department for many years. So there's a chance that they're maybe undersized in similar ways to us because that's how the department was just kind of managed over many years.
Now I'm going to jump back into projects, starting with where we're coming from. So we went back to the 2018 bond here, and I should note that the project selection on the bond was actually before Jason and I arrived. So these next few slides are a little bit of a forensic exercise, and we definitely welcome input if there are inaccuracies here. But as you can see, council, our understanding is council authorized $14.5 million bond in 2018 to fund 43 major maintenance projects. A long list of projects that were in the six-year CIP, and part of the prioritization was through a citizen advisory committee. The original consideration was for a $70 million bond to address 55 projects. Just some lessons learned here. The cost of the projects were underestimated, or in some cases, scope was later added on. But I'm going to go into the projects that were completed or partially completed next. And staff were able to leverage the bond funds to secure an additional $2.5 million in grant funding. So of that, 43 project lists, CIP lists, these were the projects that were completed. They included structural repairs, multiple ones at Coulon Park, as well as the Cedar River Trestle Bridge, major renovations at Kiwanis and Philip Arnold Parks, as well as the Coulon North Water Walk, six playground replacements in terms of equipment replacement, two courts at Liberty and Teasdale, and then the fitness area and parking lots at the Senior Center. This slide shows those, that original list, the projects that were not yet completed. So Coulon irrigation renovations, Coulon Bath House and the Swim Beach, sports courts at Highlands, Talbot Hill and Kenny Dale Lions, the sports fields, Teasdale, Liberty, Philip Arnold Park, and the parking lots at Coulon and Tiffany Park, and then also some pathway and shoreline bank erosion issues that are adjacent to Jones Park. There were some additional projects outside of that original list that have been completed in that time, and this is just a list of those, including Sunset Park Cascade Playground relocation and new equipment, North Highlands Fit Lot, Foot Salt Goals at Tiffany and Highlands, pretty comprehensive structural assessment of bulkheads, piers, bridges, and then a number of facility projects, including the Family First Community Center, renovations at Senior Center, and the Cedar River Boathouse. And then this is where we're going. This is our 2024 CIP and planning projects that we have on our roster. The first one is the Parks Recreation and Natural Area Plan Update, and Jason will be managing that. So I'm going to let him say a few words.
Sure, just briefly, we'll be looking forward to talking to you about this much more in the coming, really coming months and years ahead, but it's about time to start updating our Parks Recreation Natural Areas Plan. And, you know, we're excited to participate with, have you participate in this process throughout and listen and document and incorporate and bring that all forward. But we're really opening this up, taking a whole new look, really contemplating some new directions about where we can go with this. And so a lot more to follow on that in the months, months ahead, for sure.
And just going down a little bit on this list, we have two master plans at the, at the start there. Those are two new park sites in northeast and southwest Renton. We have some liabilities with park grant funds to open up those sites. They were acquired with grant funding. We need to open them to the public. And they will also address a gap in service. So we're starting those now. And then there's a few things on this list that are from that original CIP list, like Talbot Hill Reservoir renovation, the Coulon Swim Beach, and then projects that came up, like the Spring Brook Trail Boardwalk repairs through the vandalism, a number of playgrounds that we prioritize based on maintenance and safety needs first. So Maplewood and Highlands are the first two, Arlington potentially this year, most definitely in the following year. And World Cup's coming, Piazza Gateway, the Pavilion Project. We're working well with CED and Facilities on, on those sites. And a number of facility renovations, H Mac, Senior Center, RCC, the Park Shop, New Park Shops, and museum renovations. We have land acquisitions as they come up, and Jason leads those. And then we're closing out our large bond projects, and then it is also grant application time right now. So we'll be coming to you for some, some of those applications coming up. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Jason.
And it is, it is sort of grant season in these parts, and certainly, the program's been quite successful over the last, we pulled the five-year timeframe because it kind of aligned well with the bond, the bond process, but really going after and having a high success rate to bring in about $4 million in outside funding to help support not just the bond projects, but other important capital projects that the team's been working on. And there's other opportunities out there as well. So this is sort of just the beginning. We're, we're really excited to see where we can take this. So we'll be talking about that as well, coming up here in some future meetings outside of this one. We're also kind of going to highlight some of the interdepartmental work we're helping support and lead. You know, we don't do all this alone, and we're also excited to partner with our, our internal departments to help fulfill a number of kind of overlapping and complementary visions, whether it's economic development opportunities. Betsy briefly mentioned World Cup, but looking at parks as economic drivers, downtown redevelopment. We're also partnering with our, our current and long-range planning folks. Comp plan is underway right now and hopefully to be adopted here within the next year. We've, we've supported sub-area plans and really a number of other types of smaller, smaller planning projects. We're also working with some of our engineering folks in house. We're helping support I-405 widening and gateway projects, working with sound transit facilities that we're excited to see coming to the city and seeing how those kind of can overlap and merge some of our complementary interests. We also look at how we can integrate equity and sustainability into our parks. There's a lot of opportunity there, so we're excited to talk about that with you in the future. I think that could also show prominently in our Parks Plan Update that we're excited to be kicking off here in a few months. Minto Facilities has joined us tonight. They're, they're obviously a critical partner of ours as well, a number of overlaps on our park sites and vice versa. Our utilities, I mean, really, there's, there's no end. We, I really enjoy working with our Surface Water Facility folks, among others. You know, we look at park sites separately to complement some of our, our water quality goals, our flooding, our flood mitigation goals and so on. We obviously work closely with our Transportation Systems Division. We kind of co-develop the master plan to that end to help support trails and bicycle facilities in the city, among other things. And of course, community safety is paramount. We want to make sure we have safe parks, and we, we look at how we can plan and develop our parks in a way that they're safe, but also hopefully promote a safe, a safe community just, just by their presence. And so with that, I'm kind of happy to say that, you know, the city's been really successful at acquiring lands. The parklands are obviously beloved. We hear a lot about them from our community, and we enjoy their correspondence. And we're at this point now where we've been successful in acquiring these lands, and now we're kind of looking at, you know, how do we, how can we best manage these and rethink these going into the future to best support a growing population, a changing demographic, and the community, you know, we want to see, hear, and care about. So I'll turn it back over to MJ.
Yes, we wanted to keep this presentation concise. It was just to give you an overview of what was passed previously, what projects were complete, the status of those projects, as well as other projects we're supporting and participating in, in terms of staffing, what we're working with at the moment. As we've highlighted, there's several opportunities, and we wanted to also give plenty of time for conversation with council about the status of the department, as well as these projects. We just listed in here new approaches and strategies. We do want to affirm and promise to council and the public that we are restrategizing on prioritizing maintenance and public safety and the aesthetic, as well as our greening and urban forestry that the public is also very interested in as well, basically our environmental stewardship. We certainly weren't all the people that were part of the previous bond, but we wanted to make sure you knew where we were at in terms of completion. And also just, we are completely open to a different strategy. Our intent with this upcoming plan is to really listen to the residents and make sure that their feedback is reflected in the document and that it's also reflected in the priorities in terms of how we move forward. So that's it for our presentation, council, and we would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, council? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, everybody. Great presentation. MJ, in the community of the Hall, the second of 2020, there was a presentation about the $14.5 million bond and the 43 major maintenance projects. And it was a table with that presentation that say how much money it has, or has been projected for each one, and in each one, which one you were going to need to complete with grants. I heard that some of these projects were on their budget. Is there a way to update that table? Because I like to see visually, these are the 43 projects, these are the ones that are completed, how much it cost at the end, how it was projected, and how much it cost at the end, and how much of the money of the bond was used for that, and how much addition for grants.
We certainly can follow up and provide that to all council members for your review. Yes.
Thank you very much, MJ.
Councilmember O'Halloran and Councilmember Rivera.
Okay, I have actually two questions, but I'll start with the first one. I've been asked a couple of times in the last little bit about the Car Road property. What's, what's happening with that?
The Edland acquisition?
Yes.
We're, we're starting to look into that. We've been in discussions with that, with Kerry Olson, looking at, and CED, we're, we recognize that project is in need of, of moving onto our list, but it's, it's not, probably not this year, I would say. But there's starting to be some staff discussions of the car property. Yeah.
There are requirements for the grant in terms of increasing access, so we're working out that right now with the grant tour on terms of being compliant. And then we'll be moving forward with the master plan. We're looking at, we are responsible. We've been sitting on that property for a really long time, and we do recognize that that does need to have some activation. So we will be following up with council on next steps. We, we recognize we need to move on that property.
Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you. Thank you, MJ, and everyone for an amazing presentation. My question is regarding a little more detail regarding that community outreach that was done. The reason for my question, and you probably know where I'm going with this, is last year, Tiffany Park got a foot salt court. There was no feedback from the community. Nobody knew what it was. It was, it's a very actively used basketball court, like almost daily, and then it was under construction. People had no idea what was happening, and they didn't think that it was really needed. However, it was identified as a high-needs area. And so where are we coming at? Like, and my question is, community outreach, we obviously, I understand there are high-needs and low-needs areas, but where are we coming in when it comes to those high-needs areas and actually talking to the community members?
Thank you for that question. That was a missed opportunity to not connect with the neighborhood, and that is why the neighborhood program is so much more involved in the whole planning division and the department. Really, we're really lucky to have them back with us, is assuring that we're meeting and touching all of those existing relationships, too, because that's a massive oversight, realizing we had that relationship. So we will be making sure we are going through everywhere we do have recognized neighborhoods, but also utilizing traditional methods as far as mailing and surveying. And so our intent is to be as authentic and strategic and make a more profound effort. We are certainly trying to learn from our mishaps, and that was one of them. We're hopeful that it's still of value and benefit to the community. It is a wonderful resource, but there was a missed chance to have their voices heard, as well as us informing them of what we felt was an opportunity that we didn't want to miss at that time.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
MJ, great, great job. Thank you guys so much for the presentation. I'm, I'm coming to you in a second. I want to go back to Slide 10 real quick. The projects not completed. Do we have an ETA on when we might be getting to those projects?
Some of them we do. So Talbot Hill, for instance, is happening this year, and also studies for the Coulon Swim Beach are definitely this year. It might take some time to permit what needs to happen at the Swim Beach. And I, I believe Coulon irrigation, a number of these projects are on the CIP, but just not starting this year. We'd have to get back to you on exactly which years.
If you could get back, because I mean, I, I remember, I was president when we did the community advisory thing for the parks bond, and we went through an exhaustive process. And it'd be great to find out when we think, for our residents, we might get to some of these projects that aren't completed before we potentially think about going out for another one in the future. You know, we want to show our work.
We certainly, council president, and thank you for the question, is added to the columns that Councilmember Prez was requesting in terms of status and projection completion. We can include that for those, so that way you have it for all of these items.
Thank you so much. Councilmember McGurvin, Councilmember Prez, and then Councilmember Rowan.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I wanted to first with a quick comment and then a question. The comment is just to commend that image on Slide 3 with the data visualization of where people are coming from. I think that's really great, and it's, it's helpful to kind of see both in the utilization and then to see really how, how big of a reach really they have in some of these cases. I thought that was really interesting, and I'm assuming it's informative to some of the decisions we make down the line. The question I have is on Slide, where'd it go? Sorry, now flip back to the other one. The 2024 projects on Slide 12. I think I see a little dot there. I just wanted to check, because my question was also a very specific project, and that's the Cedar River Trail, the flood damage for the erosion from 2020. And just knowing, is that close to, because I know there are some federal components to that as far as reimbursement goes, but what the timeline might be.
I believe that's, Colleen is running that project, and I believe it's at 50% design and permitting is happening, and I, I believe it's going to construction in 2025.
Councilmember Prez?
Please, MJ, pass a thank you and congratulations to, to most of your staff for the absolutely great job that they have done in the last three years of dating these projects. It's really a highlight when we are invited to the opening of the parks, because they are like, I, I say this as a first, a front page, parks. I would have liked to see more in this presentation, just because these videos stay forever in YouTube, and, and it's a way to highlight the job and the money that we have put there and the people has brought that, that money for, because some of them are very shocking how good they look. Yes, because I don't know what other word I can use. I would say amazing. I remember the, one of the last one that I went, I, I couldn't stop talking about that one for days. I took and dropped my husband all the way to Highlands just to see it. They said, you have to see this park. So, so kudos to all of you. You have done an incredible job, and in the same way that there, there was a question about the Spring River Bridge, the structural assessment, I'm really concerned about the Spring Brook Trail Boardwalk repair, repair that was born. You say that the seed is going to be in 2025. Any idea? I know that is this, Colleen, for the, for the, for the Spring Brook Trail.
Yes, I can be, that's actually coming to you all in a few weeks. We're getting our engineering consulting and under contract, so we hope to get going on that. The one question on timing of construction is permitting, because it is a wetland, and we may need to redo some of the footings of the boardwalk, which may trigger some federal permits. But yeah, we're getting started on that right away.
Councilmember O'Halloran, Councilmember Vaughn, and then Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you. This is not necessarily about parks in particular, but it's Ivy mitigation on trees in parks and open spaces. I know that Ivy is very hard to control, but I also know that it's, can be devastating to sanding trees. And so I'm wondering if in any of our maintenance, is there some, some kind of a maintenance rotation for checking out the Ivy and trees, especially along the Cedar River and the hillside to the south of the, the dog park?
Thank you, council member. I don't have a specific answer for that. I think Ian Gray is our city arborist, and he's phenomenal. He probably could rattle it off instantly. We certainly can follow up on a response to that, and we do get a lot of questions from the public on their genuine concern and the health of our trees, so we will follow up with that answer.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Great presentation. I have two questions. First, I have a comment. I initiate that. I'm reaching that, I believe, this is a project. I think a lot of times we, we get into the areas where there's, there's. So to answer my question, so the uncompleted projects of those, I don't know what started with, but are there intention to have those completed, acquired, should we go out and redo the project, and then in line with the, with which of those? Would you want them to be completed? And I wanted to tie it together that, you know, there's lack of parks and maintenance opportunities in certain areas of our, our town.
I'll touch on the equity piece really fast before Betsy speaks to it, but Jason and Betsy are just, I can't tell you how much of a breath of fresh air they both are to the city and super grateful. Jason already is pursuing, so the new approach to the upcoming plan, we'll be using GIS, and we'll be layering our equity data and analytics that we have from our census. So we'll be able to help prioritize future projects with that equity lens, literally a geographic lens. We've not done that in the past, but we've not sorted per that information, which we will be doing that in the upcoming process to make sure that we're not leaving specific communities and neighborhoods out. So we will be coming forward with the new document with that component. In terms of completion, I don't know, Betsy, do you have a? Yeah, it's okay. We apologize. That is, it's a good question, and we'd be happy to come back with an answer for you on that, council member.
Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you. My next question pertains to the acquisition of certain parklands. I was curious, because I've been hearing around the, from the from the Tiffany Park Homeward Association and the Neighborhood Association regarding Ginger Creek Park. They've been really wanting the city to acquire that land, but the city doesn't want the park, allegedly. And I just wanted to hear some more on why we are not wanting certain parks. Like, there's also another park in the Tiffany Park neighborhood, and there's a whole trail and a row of land that the Neighborhood, or the Homeward Association, forgive me, the Homeward Association, would like to be rid of. It's a lot of foresty land on the east side of Pierce Avenue when you cross the street on Pierce Avenue Southeast. And they're hearing that the city doesn't want it. So in terms of like acquiring land, where, like, what's the process? What are the standards? If a neighborhood or a Homeward Association wants to give us a park, and we don't want it, why, kind of?
I think it varies, but I'll speak to Ginger Creek really fast. That is owned by the utility company, and so the utility company has not had that conversation with us. The neighborhood has been maintaining it. It is a very old neighborhood grant project that has outgrown its original, I think, intent, purpose, and mutual value, and it's needing to be reassessed. So we can certainly pick back that, on that conversation, but it does, it's not city-owned property. It's a utility-owned property. We'd be happy to talk to residents. Residents call, and Jason speaks to them all the time on property. So it's really case by case, but we're happy to talk to whoever has been working with you on assessing if that's something we're able to do.
And when it comes to like neighborhood-owned property, not utility-owned property, is it the same deal?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you so much for answering those questions.
Councilmember Vaughn, then Councilmember Perez.
Last question I have is from Page 12. In terms of the playwalk requests, have the ones been completed? And then, of course, the, the ones that we don't have, it wishes to be live to be placed, and they know they're completed. Very excited with the different parts, they want a place.
Yes, the playgrounds shown here, we, we went out and assessed a number, probably about six or seven sites, and prioritized them based on greatest need, especially related to safety. There are some, there can be issues with certain play components that are difficult to replace after 20 years, you know, just specific components. But then, there's issues with fall zones. So we may need to expand some of the play boxes to bring those back into compliance. But the, we, I can give you the exact priority list, but I, my memory is it's starting with Maplewood, then Highlands, then Arlington, then, I think, Windsor Hill, Glenco. And I should probably give you that list at a later date.
That was pretty impressive.
We're, we're happy to give you that list, and we're happy to say that we are trying to work with the residents. I think a good example was Coulon Playground Replacement, where we get to a point where we want residents to work in on the elements and components. So we'll continue to do that in these upcoming projects. But we'll get you a specific list, Councilmember, and all Councilmembers, so you can see where those are at.
Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, President. In regards of the land acquisition, we have, we have had over the years, reports, discussions about how many land do we need? How many land can we maintain, which is, has been key. I do remember during the City Advisor Committee meetings, long, long, long meetings. One of the parts were the areas in the city that we don't have anything, that we don't have parks. And yes, we still have a lot of property, property that we cannot utilize because of the lack of funds. So I think that we have been very conservative in the, in the past. And, and, and my, my principle is the same that we have had for the last, at least 10 years, which is we cannot have more than what we can maintain in good quality and, and in good standards for the residents of Renton. However, we have not asked this question for a long time. What are the plans, plans for the Edlund property? That has been there for almost 20 years, that we acquired it. And because now it's floating area, and it's this and it's that, is sitting down there with any plans? And I would like to hear more about that. What are the, the future plans for that property? 20 lands is a big, big, big piece of property. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. We do understand the sentiment. What we are going to do with this park plan and be more robust and intentional with it. It's a massive opportunity. We're looking to develop service levels, depending on the park and the usage, so that we prioritize where it's highly utilized. And then, we can reduce in areas that it's not to the same degree. So we're trying to be more strategic in what we've done, partnering with community economic development and utilizing their tools for being able to quantify these kinds of visits is super powerful. We've not had this sort of analytics and information before. So that will be helpful for us to help prioritize. It can go all the way down to months, days, times, things of that nature. So that is something that we hope to implement, so that we're targeting our parks more accurately. We're in the process of developing those plans, and we do acknowledge that the Department has had several large properties that we've not had plans for. But we are in the process of developing them. And I think what we can hopefully tell you is there's a massive paradigm shift in the Department in terms of how to catch up. And the goal is really to make the Department the jewel of the city. We want it to be beautiful, safe, functional, aesthetically pleasing, and accessible for all abilities and ages. And so, we have big ambitions, and we think we can achieve them. So we're working towards it, but we do recognize that we have some things to make up for.
Councilmember Rivera, and then Councilmember McGurven.
Thank you so much. You're gonna know this question as well. But with the sun coming out, it's been glorious. And everyone's allergies are going off, as usual. And I'm going to say, you know, in charge of parks, a big problem with allergies is because over 90% of trees parked in, planted in parks by cities and counties are typically pollen-bearing trees, where less than 10%, and I think in the city of Renton, we have like less than 5% of fruit-bearing trees, which could also provide food equity if partnered with Sustainability Renton, but could also help offset a lot of these really horrific allergies that we're experiencing. In terms of your park plans, is food equity and planting more fruit-bearing trees versus pollen-bearing trees to offset allergies a part of that plan?
I think we have a urban forestry plan, which is called, is it Rooted? Rooted in Renton, which is a pretty amazing plan. I think there's an opportunity to look in there and to offset female trees and plants as well. We want to plant more. We have a very desire to, and there's an equity of greenery as well. So we're interested in accomplishing that initiative. In terms of fruit bearing, we don't, I don't think, have a strategy around that. I'd have to verify in the plan. And in terms of food equity, that's where we do partner and leverage our human services to make sure food access is strongly supported by council, as we know you wish it to be.
Councilmember McGurven.